Fade to District 128 logo. Board members seated at table.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the regularly scheduled board meeting for Community High School, District 128. Thank you for everybody for joining us. If we could start off and stand for the pledge.
Everyone stands for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone returns to their seats.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Jim Batson.
Here.
Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Don Carmichael.
Pause for answer.
Kara Drumke.
Here.
Middleish Cotwell.
Here.
Sunal Kulkarni.
Pause for answer.
Okay, we note five of our seven members present. We do have a quorum. To review the agenda, we have several items for communication. We will start out with an invitation for public comment. I have no one that's signed in, but certainly the mic will be open if anybody decides to address the board with the three-minute time limit. We are looking forward to a presentation by Miller Cooper of our Fiscal Year 23 financials. We are looking forward to a report from our teachers' union and our student school board rep reports. We have a couple of FOIA requests, and then we have some good news from Dr. Herman.
Momentary pause.
For our consent vote agenda, these items are the things that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion. These are past meeting minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, educational tour requests, employment matters, disposal of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, and financial reports. These items have gone through extensive board committee review and recommendation, and documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members as well as the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do we have any board members wishing to remove consent vote items at this time?
Pause for discussion.
Okay, seeing none. Then we will move on to items for action. We do have several items that we will be voting on tonight, and we have several items for information as well. Then we will discuss future agenda items. We do have a closed session this evening after the public board business is finished to discuss the employment of an employee under 5 ILCS 120/2C1, and then we will return to open session. Will we be taking any action coming out of closed session? We will not be taking any action, so we will move to adjourn the meeting after the closed session. So at this time, I would like to invite anybody from the public wishing to address the board to please come to the microphone.
Pause for the public.
Lisa Hessel.
If you could just please say your name.
Socrates Vella approaches the podium.
Socrates Vella and Vernon Hills. So I'm here to bring up a topic about what happened in December as far as the emergency meeting. Some of the board members were not here, and other principals were not here.
You mean those special meeting?
The special engagement meeting, community engagement meeting.
In December, yes.
Correct. And you approved $91,000 to go to Missouri Company to poll residents about whether they'd be interested in a referendum in November for building improvements. So I emailed the board, but I guess you don't read emails, so I'm basically...
We responded to your emails.
I apologize. You did respond, thank you, by the way. And in that email, I was asking that we should, we could do better job with that money. One example I gave was paint restorative field. Hessel did mention that that project did start. So my goal is to try to get that money to stay in Lake County. I don't think it's a good idea to spend $91,000 to ask us if we want a referendum in November. And I would really encourage the board members, because I think there was, when it was adopted, it was, there was a clause there that would allow the board members to pull, pull that contract. So I don't know all the details and what it would take, but you don't need to pay $91,000 to an outside company. You could just ask us. I'll tell you right now, if they call me and ask me if I want, if I'm okay with, you know, a referendum in November to raise funds, I'm probably going to say no. The first question is, what is the board doing to make sure that you're making good use of the money that's here already? That would be me. I would think a lot of people would take that approach as well. And so I worry that the $91,000 is really not going to buy you anything, and I think that money can be put to better use. You know, I point out Libertyville High School can use a lot of updating. And I'm pretty sure you have many ideas and projects that could get funded with that money. So I just asked the board members to reconsider. The board, the board meeting started out with Ms. Benjamin saying, why don't we do it ourselves, right? And I think at the end, Kulkarni and Drumke were like, well, you know, we're afraid to vote no on this because we think we're going to keep money away from the kids. But the vote really wasn't to say, do we want a referendum in November? It was more, we're going to hire this company to find out if we could put a referendum in November. And I think, I think, I think putting a referendum in November is a great idea. I just don't think you need to pay someone to find that answer. Thank you for your time.
Socrates Vella leaves the podium.
Anyone else?
John Hetzel approaches the podium.
John Hetzel, Vernon Hills. I've looked through the finance and facilities meeting notes, and I've seen some updates on some of the information relating to the facilities upgrades that you want to make with a potential referendum. I feel like within this forum here is where a list of what those projected plans might be with that money that you would want to raise and what you're going to update or what you're going to upgrade. Obviously, Socrates, I think most people agree, there are some things that need to be done in Libertyville. This is a newer school. Obviously, you have a few things that are getting dated. We know about the roof situation. But I also wanted to say that I think, you know, after tax levy in the last year and tax levy this year, and I think you maxed out pretty close to what you could on the tax levy this year, you're already hitting the community with a lot of extra tax dollars that you're proposing to everybody, or you're already taking from everybody. And now you want to do a referendum. And I imagine you'll have another tax levy on the agenda next year because that's, which is pretty common, but it's the amount that you're taking. I feel like fiduciary responsibility is really important in managing the budgets. There's a lot of things, like Socrates said, $91,000 for the survey, $21,000 to put a logo on the ball field that nobody's going to see. Those are some of the things that, you know, could be looked at a little bit differently, and some of the money could be allocated differently. In my career, business management budgets are huge, just like they are here. But what you're doing is you're playing with free taxpayer money. It's a lot different. So I'd like to see fiduciary responsibility looked at these things closer, and I'd like to see in this forum, I haven't seen it, maybe it is, but I want to see what the, and I think the community does too, what are those improvements? I've seen some of them, I know what they are, but I think I had to dig into the finance and facilities meeting to see that. Maybe I'm wrong, but maybe it wasn't this. But I think it would be good to have that in the context of this meeting as well, so that more of the community that probably watches a little bit more of this than they would finance and facilities has a clear understanding of it. And then, you know, obviously then how you're going to communicate that out as part of what you agree to do with this one firm if you get from A to B to C on that. So that's all the information I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Pause for the public.
Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to item B in communication, Fiscal Year 23 financials presentation by Miller Cooper.
Dan Stanley.
I'm going to invite up Betsy Allen, who is our partner with Miller Cooper, to present briefly on our fiscal 23 financial report.
Betsy Allen approaches the podium.
Go ahead, Betsy.
Thank you, Dan. I do just a brief presentation together just to point out some, some items within the financial statements. If you have any questions as I'm going through it, or when I get done, feel free to, I'll take any questions when I'm, when I'm done. So first of all, I just wanted to touch upon why we even need to have an audit. And it is required that every school district in the state of Illinois have an audit done by a public accounting firm that is qualified to do school district audits. The audit is performed, you know, by an independent third party, and the objective is to obtain reasonable assurance that your financial statements are free from material misstatement.
Pause for slide.
The main purpose of our audit is for us to express an opinion on your 2023 financial statements, which we will look at shortly in just a few minutes. Also, if needed, we would issue communication regarding recommendations on internal control or other opportunities and information we could give the district to gain efficiencies within their office or any observations that we have made. This year, we did not issue a management letter with any controlled efficiencies. And lastly, the professional standards do require that we communicate certain items to the board in writing, and we will look at some of those items later in the presentation.
Pause for slide.
The documents that we did provide to the district, and some of them are filed with different agencies. First, we issued the annual comprehensive financial report. These are your GAAP-bound financial statements is another way we refer to them, and they are filed with ASBO International and GFOA to be evaluated, to receive the certificate of achievement and the certificate of excellence in financial reporting. We also issue ISB, Illinois State Board of Education, their annual financial report. It's their state form, which is filed with the State Board of Education. We then also issue our opinion on government auditing standards. The State Board of Education does require that we perform the audits in accordance with government auditing standards. We also then issue our single audit opinion and package. A single audit is performed in accordance with uniform guidance as a district does expend over $750,000 in federal funds. And lastly, we did issue our required communication to the board letter.
Pause for slide.
On the next slide, you'll see that the financial profile summary. The school code requires that ISB has a calculation to monitor all the finances of all the districts within the state of Illinois. There can be very many variables with this calculation each year, but you will see that the district does again have an estimated profile score of recognition as they did last year also.
Pause for slide.
In fiscal year 23, we did have a new accounting standard that we had to implement, and it was GASB 96, which is your subscription-based information technology arrangement. We did work with the district and technology in order to implement the standard. And as you can see in the note on the bottom, it does just discuss the, the implementation did, did require the recording of subscription assets and the subscription liability in the government-wide financial statements.
Pause for slide.
So within the annual comprehensive financial report, you will see in the document, it's divided into three sections, the introductory section, the financial section, and the statistical section. Within the introductory section, you will see a transmittal letter that is prepared by management, as well as an organizational chart, a list of officers and officials, and also the certificate of excellent financial reporting and the certificate of achievement in excellent financial reporting that the district has received for over 20 years.
Pause for slide.
The next section within the report is the financial section. On page one of that report is the unmodified, there's an unmodified clean opinion, which is our independent auditor's report. This is the highest level of assurance that we can give as auditors. Starting on page six is the management's discussion and analysis. I always like to tell people, if you don't want to read the whole, with 100 or 200 pages of the report, it's a great section to read. It gives a lot of financial highlights of the district, gives a brief overview and description of the statements that are included in there in the document, as well as condensed financial statements, and also a section that lists some information, financial information that could impact the district in the future.
Pause for slide.
The next section is the basic financial statement, starting on page 16. Here, it includes all the base, again, the basic financial statements, as well as the notes to financial statements. The notes are where you're going to see a lot of descriptions of the information that is included in the basic financial statements, such as information on the cash and investments, summary of significant accounting policies, information on the debt and the capital assets of the district, as well as many pages on the pension liabilities, the IMRF and TRS, as well as the OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefit liabilities.
Pause for slide.
The final two sections of the financial section include, again, some multi-year schedules on the pension and OPEB liabilities, as well as some budgetary schedules for each fund that is held by the district.
Pause for slide.
The final section of the report is the statistical section, and here you can see the different financial trends, revenue capacity, which is mainly information on the property taxes, debt capacity, and then also demographic, economic, and operating information are contained in this section. Most of these schedules are multi-year schedules that contain 10 years of information.
Pause for slide.
As I discussed earlier, we do issue our required communication to the board letter, which is where I said professional standards do require us to communicate certain items. As you can see, we did perform our audits in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards. In the letter also, it will, it will state the GASB statements, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, of statements that we had to implement this year, and there's also a long list of statements that will be implemented in future years. I think next year in fiscal 24, we have sort of a year off from any implementation of big standards, which will be nice for us and the district. The letter also reports any significant accounting estimates and financial statement disclosures. It also does state that we had no difficulties in completing the audit. I want to thank Dan and his entire staff for their assistance during the audit and the implementation of the new standard, which took a little time, but everything was, has been released and filed with the respective agencies.
Pause for slide.
We had no, no significant adjusting journal entries, no uncorrected misstatements, and we have, did not identify any unusual transactions, and management did sign and provide us with a management representation letter when we issued all the deliverables.
Pause for slide.
And then, as I stated in the beginning, we did not issue a controlled deficiency or management letter this year. The only item that we did report, which we reported in our required communication letter, is just a management advice, which is a recommendation. We, it's in regards to technology and data security. We put this in all of our clients' letters, just as a reminder that technology is ever evolving and just making sure that you're staying on top of all the changes. So again, it's not stating there's anything wrong with the technology or anything that's going on, it's just a reminder to all of our clients.
Pause for slide.
On the last slide, it's just my contact information if anyone ever had any questions. Does anyone have any questions or?
Pause for questions.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa Hessel.
Thank you very much. Now I will turn it over to the teachers' union for their report.
Monica Caldicott approaches the podium.
Good evening. I'm Monica Caldicott, president of the D-128 Federation of Teachers. I appreciate the chance to share with you a growing concern that union educators have about class size. Because sectioning conversations are quickly approaching, and because the Advanced Placement Act will demand much flexibility, we believe this to be a pressing issue that needs your consideration and attention. Two years ago, our union was in negotiations with this board and administration, and for the first time in D-128 history, expected class sizes were codified into our collective bargaining agreement. In general, the size of AP classes was raised from 22 to 25 students, while the general size of college prep courses was brought down from 28 students to 25. These changes went into effect during this school year. The term used in our collective bargaining agreement is class optimum. We understand the definition of optimum versus maximum. We understand the administration's expectation that, like a bell curve, a certain number of classes would have students over the agreed-upon number. However, we also know that optimum is defined as the most favorable outcome. Any number of students over an agreed-upon optimum class size should be avoided when possible. The union and the board collectively agreed on the most favorable class sizes for students and for teachers. To us, those numbers reflect the most beneficial class sizes for students to learn and perform at their best because they can have the full attention and support of their teachers. We understand that some courses have seen a decrease in class sizes due to the new optimums, and that there are some inherently smaller electives, such as digital art and design, or auto tech, or pastry arts, that are at the heart of the district's commitment to multiple pathways. We're happy about those classes. However, we are noticing that there are certain populations of students who are experiencing more classes over optimum than others. A new trend we have seen this year is that our college prep and honors sections are over maximum more than the AP classes. For example, in the core classes, right, science, English, math, social studies, at the college prep level, we have shifted from 5% of classes over optimum last year to 12% over optimum this year. An example is that four out of nine sections of Algebra II at Libertyville High School are over optimum. These Algebra II classes were divided pretty tightly, with 25.22 students per section, allowing for little wiggle room in a class we know every student takes. We do know that optimum is not a maximum, but we have concerns that our students in college prep level courses, on average, are over optimum more than students in AP level classes. Typically, our college prep level courses have a higher need for differentiation, personalized learning, and small group instruction. It is harder to give our students those individualized learning experiences when we are over optimum in those sections. But if we were to accept that overages do happen, as administration asks us to accept, it leads to a new question. What percent of, what percentage of students do you feel is acceptable to have above the number we collectively agreed upon is good for students? In what number of classrooms is it okay to put more teenagers with adult bodies, big personalities, and even bigger backpacks? What percent of classes is it okay for the teacher not to be able to give the individualized attention they wish they could? What number would raise the concern of this board? Is it 5% over, 10%, 15%? Additionally, our core classes have not decreased in the way you might think. While our college prep level core optimum class size dropped by three full students, the actual class sizes decreased by only .8 students. However, our AP core class size shifted from 22 to 25 students, and we reasonably see an actual increase of 2.2 students. From where we stand, AP class sizes proportionally increased, whereas college prep level classes only decreased slightly despite a three-student drop in the optimum. While most of the numbers we have shared apply to our core classes, this problem exists in other departments as well. For example, over 20% of our physical welfare classes are over optimum district-wide. Now is the critical time to talk about class sizes. Due to a new state law called the Advanced Placement Act, D-128 and other districts will see more students than ever moving diagonally to more academically challenging classes based upon their standardized test scores. We are excited to see the opportunities this act will provide students, but we know these challenges will mean more students seeking our help and support. This brings us to our final concern, decreased educator staffing. That is defined as full-time equivalent, or FTE. Declining student enrollment has been used as justification for eliminating FTE from the classroom. But when it has gone so far as to not honor our class optimums, have we gone too far? At the very time we need educators to support students striving to level up, we can't afford to lose educator time. For example, in the LHS English department, .4 FTE was reassigned to the English learner department and not replaced. This comes off a recent retirement that was also not replaced. This is the same department that last year had no overages in their college prep and honors level classes, but this year, 15% over class optimum. With this drastic increase, you might understand the staff picture a bit more clearly. If you look at the staffing reports from the last two years presented to this school board every March, you will see that the general education staffing has decreased by 6.6 FTE, or 6.6 full-time teachers. Some, but not all of that FTE has been reallocated to special services, our EL department, and other non-classroom support roles. But also, administration allocated non-teaching FTE into three new administrative positions at the district office. While these positions have been working on bigger picture items, they are not supporting the needs of our students on a day-to-day basis. As sectioning numbers come through in the coming weeks, we hope to hear you discuss this pressing issue at the table. Class size directly impacts the way we support our students and the way they learn in our classrooms. We want to minimize where there are overages in classes to ensure there are no inequities at certain levels. We ask the board to question where tier one and tier two interventions are being placed to help students. We ask the board to consider how we can best support our staff members in providing individualized learning experiences to students through class sizes that are at or below optimum. We ask the board to continue, consider reinstating the FTE that has been lost from classrooms without shifting it from elsewhere. And we ask the board to consider how to best use FTE to support students where it matters most in our classrooms.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to our student school board representatives for their reports.
Louis Perry. Good evening. It's good to be back, and these last few, last few weeks have been very busy for the theater and academic teams. This past weekend, the freshman and sophomore play opened Friday and closed Saturday evening. They performed the Broadway musical Honk. Sophomore Katie Baker, who was a part of the Drowsy Chaparral as well this past fall, said, "Honk is a show about a duckling who's different from his brothers and sisters and tries to find himself throughout the show, which is a message I think we all know very well." As for her thoughts on how practices and performances went, she said it was super fun to perform with all people in my grade, and to portray an animal on stage was also fun and interesting to do. Maddie Pierce, another sophomore, said, "It's okay to be you and different, no matter what people say." The next theatrical performance will be the winter play, The Complete Works of William Shakespeare abridged, this month on February 9th and 10th. As well, this past week, Scholastic Bowl competed against Zion Benton High School. It's been an adjustment this year after losing players from last year and helping new students find their strengths in the program. But last week, almost every varsity team member buzzed in with their correct answer and helping them bring the team to victory. Sophomore JV member Shu Varshney said, "Competing in Scholastic Bowl from meeting new people to laughing later out of silly mistakes has been an awesome experience." Junior Sarah Abraham, a varsity team member, said, "It was a rewarding experience to be able to buzz in for the first time because there are not many outside opportunities outside of Scholastic Bowl where knowing random information can help you." Another varsity team member, Ariya Misra, said, "It's really fun to see how things you learn in class can actually pay off." This coming Wednesday, the varsity will compete in the conference tournament at Lake Forest. And lastly, speaking of academic teams, the LHS Science Olympiad team had a strong run to their season. Science Olympiad is a variety of events in science with different focuses in each science field. There are competition tests in biology, robotics, computer science, chemistry, as well as pure testing competitions. In some events, students are required to build towers, wind turbines, which are tested to see which has the highest voltage from harnessing wind power, and even creating paint planes out of balsa wood. They had a good turnout at their last meet hosted at Crystal Lake, and they placed first in optics, which is lasers and mirrors, second in robotics, and third in code busters. Eric Vu, a senior, said, "I've had a lot of fun. It's been a great year with well-performing students, and as the year goes on, we will try and fill up the gaps in our events." We are seeing some promising leadership from juniors and freshmen and sophomores are really bringing some very important biology and chemistry to the table. First-year team member sophomore Eddie Lee said, "I was pretty overwhelmed when I first came, and because there were so many events, but thanks to the upperclassmen, I was able to find my place in the team." Thank you.
Louis passes the microphone to Molly.
Molly Neary. I was lucky enough to emcee the eighth-grade orientation event the night before our little five-day weekend, along with my classmates Patrick Sykes, Mr. Stevens, and Dr. Kay. We gave a short presentation on what a typical day in the life of a freshman looks like at LHS, but the rest of the action took place outside of the auditorium as the eighth graders went on a bingo journey to explore the clubs and classes offered at LHS before enduring their first course selection process. Senior Mia Colton worked the CTE Career and Technological Education Table, where she spoke about classes such as preschool and foods to parents and students. She says it was definitely beneficial as they got a lot of interest from freshmen who get insight on the variety of options they have for their classes. The bingo card gave more motivation for students to explore all of the options they have for classes, which will allow their course selection process to include more abstract courses such as arts, languages, and technology. We look forward to the Clubs and Activities Night coming up, where students can see all of the extracurricular options they have to participate in. to participate in outside the school day at LHS. Tomorrow, we will host the annual Wildcat Summit at the Crawford House on Butler Lake. This event allows students to talk in groups about their experiences with the four pillars of Wildcat Summit: healthy minds, bodies, discourse, and relationships, and participate in related activities. We also have student speakers, which Louis and I will be doing, who will lead the activities and share their personal journey with a designated pillar. As someone who has done Wildcat Summit since freshman year, it is a super exciting event because it is entirely student-led. This, along with everyone wearing pajamas and blankets, makes the event feel much more personal and more of a relaxed, comfortable setting that facilitates vulnerable but important conversations. I look forward to seeing how this year's event will go, as last year's would be very difficult to top.
Molly passes the microphone to Rakaya.
I think we're going to see if we could do a pajama and blanket board meeting, see how that goes.
Everyone laughs. Rakaya Elman Shahi.
Tonight, I will discuss the Rally for Peace, the girls' bowling team, and give an update about renovations at LHS. In December, junior James O'Keefe and senior Jenna Bedawi organized the Rally for Peace for Israel and Palestine. At least 100 students gathered in the main gym before school to hear about the ongoing situation in Israel and Palestine and listen to speeches from Bedawi and O'Keefe about statistics and how we, as LHS students, can advocate. Students were also provided with resources on how we can help by sending donations or emailing senators asking for action towards a peaceful resolution. Bedawi said, "This rally was a way to show the world what is happening, and it lends without any bias hate, Islamophobia, or antisemitism." And O'Keefe added, "The message Jenna and I wanted to send was that we, as high school students all the way across the world, have a voice and it can be heard. It is our responsibility to educate ourselves on current events, and it is also a responsibility to stand up for human life and peace." The girls' bowling team has been having a successful season. LHS will be hosting the regional tournament at our home lanes this coming weekend. We also hosted the conference tournament this past Friday. The team overall placed second. Senior Hannah Fleming placed first overall, Natalie Sykes in eighth overall, and both JV players placed in the top 10 for the JV tournament. Fleming said, "The most impressive part of my season was bowling my high game, a 289. A perfect game is 300, so to be able to come that close felt really good. We wish them best of luck at regionals and hope they qualify for the next round." Last semester, the Principals Advisory Board met with Dr. Kay to discuss the living-learning stairs that will be part of our building soon. Students had lots of questions and ideas regarding these stairs, but really seemed to be interested and on board with it because it has many benefits, whether clubs and classes meeting there, eating lunch, or signing in for a study hall. I and a group of students saw the models of how the stairs will look and where they will be located. In today, I actually saw the new textile and floor models that will start being put in the cafeteria and in the renovated bathrooms around it. I really enjoyed the experience of seeing what the school will look like in the future, even though I will have graduated by then. I think I'll definitely come back and visit to see the end result.
Maya Raval.
With everyone excited about the start of the new semester, we inquired about the way last semester ended with the final exam schedule and how that varied from class to class. And for seniors, they had their own twist with being able to exempt out of finals for semester-long classes. Speaking with many of my senior peers, they raved about the luxury of feeling more relaxed at the end of the semester as they have less finals. On the other hand, some wished that the year-long courses that didn't have a final were given more choice on the ability to not attend that day and spend more time on their college applications for the January 1st deadline. For the other grades, the freshmen were still getting accustomed to the transition of a new finish to a semester that middle school didn't present. For the sophomores and juniors, some shared those same feelings about wanting more flexibility with those year-long classes that didn't have a final. In the end, there was an overall positive reaction to that schedule. Since coming back after the winter break and the five-day weekend, Dr. Young and the counselors have been hard at work, meeting with all the students, filling out their course selection for the next school year. With the new Advanced Placement Act in effect, many of our students are being placed into classes that they wouldn't initially pick for themselves. However, some were excited for the challenge and change, while others are more nervous for what their slightly more rigorous schedules will look like for them next year. I was also able to get a teacher's perspective and how they will feel with this new law being implemented and how that might affect their course load. Given there might be the potential for more need in the honor and AP level classes, it might require more teachers for those levels than just the standard college prep level. With this, there are concerns from teachers on how best to support these students, as next year it will be many students' first time in advanced classes. There is hope the D-128 administration can help support teachers and students alike in this change in order to fulfill the original purpose of this act.
Maya passes the microphone to Ruhi. Ruhi Subramanian.
VHHS had a lot going on in the classroom this month with the History Fair. This is where students create a project according to a certain theme to dig deeper into history and engage in their social studies classes. This year's theme was Turning Points in History. Neha Khokarni focused her project on the effects of the cotton gin, and some other projects focused on the gold rush, the Salem Witch Project, and 9/11. Last week, students were able to tour the LMC and see the hard work of students and their engagement in history. Also, Mr. Adam Lukin ran the STEAM showcase, in which students produced creative projects and competed for prizes. This year's winner, Lesia Manikanda, created MED, a nonprofit that works towards solving healthcare inequality. Other projects included a tool to help clean trash from the oceans and a coding camp for young students. Vistipudhar, who helped run the event, stated, "Organizing the event was very fun, and it was great to see everyone's ideas and pitches." The STEAM showcase is used to help promote ideas of equity with creativity and is a looked-forward event every school year. VHHS also battled hard in sports, with firstly, our varsity dance team not only advancing to Day Two in state, but also placing fifth overall. Karen Kai, the varsity dance team co-captain, said, "We were so excited that we made it to state this year, especially since our sectionals was the most competitive out of the 2A group. Going from sixth in sectionals to fifth in state was a huge accomplishment." Additionally, Cheer made it to the state tournament by winning its sectional outright. Gymnastics, wrestling, swimming, diving, all were conference champs this year. Students were also gearing up for the junior-senior play that is showing this week, Sense and Sensibility. The fine arts hallways are filled currently with hard-working students and Tech Week preparing to put on a great show, opening Thursday night and closing Saturday. Go Cougars!
Furo Aurora.
Now, let's talk about senior college notifications. Seniors patiently waited four months to hear back from their early application colleges, with some having heard earlier due to rolling admissions. In fact, just last week, during seventh period, chatter among students emerged as whispers of University of Michigan results came out. Those are followed by the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and Georgia Institute of Technology notifications. But the journey isn't over yet. Seniors are still eagerly awaiting their regular decisions in late March. Now, with over 300 incoming freshmen next year, VHHS invited eighth graders and their families for an orientation night. During the event, they learned from student leaders and staff about their high school experiences and visited the numerous academic, fine arts, and athletic booths. Their VHHS students enthusiastically provided information and guidance on how to get involved. One teacher, living in the choice zone with an incoming freshman next year, described the orientation night as exceptionally student-centered in nearly all aspects. They particularly praised the personalized presentation in the auditorium, featuring humor, skits, and rundown awards, which created a fun and engaging atmosphere, with the highlight of the evening being the eighth-grade video. To them and their neighbors, the event effectively showcased the core values of VHHS community and allowed them to make better-informed decisions about their high school of choice. Thank you.
Lisa Hessel. Nice job, guys. Thank you very much. Because it was mentioned in the Teachers Union Report, as well as the Student Board Rep Report, I just want to be sure for anybody listening in the public, the Accelerated Placement Act. It's very confusing because it sounds like AP, the advanced placement courses that are available, but that is actually separate. It's a state law that affects all public high schools, and it is in fact called the Accelerated Placement Act, if anybody is interested and wants to look it up. Moving on to our FOIA requests.
Dr. Denise Herman.
Since our last board meeting, we received three FOIAs, and we have either completed them or will shortly complete them.
Thank you, and I will let you take it over for good news as well.
Yes, building off of all the students' good news, our Special Olympics has started, with the Area Snowshoe Tournament being held on Saturday, January 6th, at Hoffman Estates High School. Congratulations to Mackenzie Runke, Abby Nowaki, and Rishi Arun, who brought home gold and qualified for the state Winter Games in Galena in February 6th through 8th.
Momentary pause.
At last month's area competition held at Stevenson High School, members of the Vernon Hills High School Business Professionals of America Club qualified for the state competition in 24 individual and team events. This year's BPA state competition will be held February 22nd to 24th in Oak Brook. We look forward to continued success. The team is coached by Deborah Beagle, Chris Curry, and Danielle Pien. Next, the D-128 Thundercats fencing team had strong performances last month, earning medals at the Snowdown JV Tournament and Junior Olympic Qualifier Tournament at Northwestern University. Congratulations to Connor Arata, Anarara Kotzman, Anika Taladi, Jasmine Serino, and Emma Johnson on qualifying for next month's Junior Olympics in North Carolina. Congratulations to all the winners in this year's D-128 STEAM showcase held this month at Vernon Hills High School. D-128 students impressed the judges with their creativity, innovation, and daring projects that they worked hard on all semester to showcase to a panel of local judges from industry. First place was Leisa Manikanda, and her project was Medical Resources and Education for Everyone, and she earned a $500 prize. Second place was Juno Lee, and her project was Geometra. She won a $400 Samsung tablet prize. And third place went to Samuel Schlaue and Kartik Vasuriva for Experience Coding, and they shared a $250 prize. The annual event is hosted by the Vernon Hills Computer Science Club and computer science teacher Adam Lukin. And that is the end of our good news for this meeting.
Lisa Hessel. And as far as the STEAM showcase goes, I do want to shout out our community partners because they provided prize money and judges from their extensive experience in this professional field of STEAM, and we want to be sure we acknowledge their contributions.
Momentary pause.
Okay, moving on to our consent vote agenda. As listed, we are looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, please.
Batson, so moved.
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Pause for roll call.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Motion passes. The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to Section 4, Items for Action. I will turn it over to Mr. Kelly for our second reading and adoption of our revised board policies.
Brian Kelly.
Thank you. So again, this is a process that we've been working on since early summer and are adopting our new updated board policies into a new system, but also in going to the new system for Press Plus, we're able to do a full revamp and relook at our board policies, make sure they were up to date. I've outlined the process. We've talked about this at our December P&amp;P committee meeting, December board meeting, our January P&amp;P meeting, and so now we are ready for adoption of the whole new board policy at this meeting, which if then, if it's approved, we will then work with IASB. Carol and I are getting our policy manual updated in the new system, ready to go, and then we'll be coming back to you with some more updates. But we'll be using the new system, so hopefully from our end, that'll go a lot smoother.
And then just to clarify, so anyone from the public who wants to look at our board policies would still go to the district website, still go to the Board of Education page, and when they click on the policy manual, it will look...
It'll look...
It'll be a familiar...
Yes, it'll look all pretty much the same. Obviously, they'll... You know, some of them are being updated with some recent changes, but on the back end, it allows us, when there are new changes that come into law, and then IASB, Soliloquial Association, their school boards, their attorneys work on giving recommendations that we're able to provide a better avenue, I think, for a board to even see what changes are going into effect, and for Carol, Scott, and I to be able to review those. And there are a lot of changes, you know, like three times a year, so...
And in terms of the way that the board approves any changes to policies, that will not change.
So yeah, none of those changes will happen, so we'll bring everything again, and then it'll be two readings, so a reading at P&amp;P, a reading at the board meeting, reading at the following P&amp;P meeting, and then approval at the following board meeting after a second reading.
Great, thank you. Looking for a motion to approve the board policies as presented.
Jim Batson.
Batson, I move to adopt the updated D-128 board policy manual and resolutions as presented.
Hessel, second. Any discussion?
Pause for discussion. Lisa Hessel.
This was a very large effort, so thank you to Don, our board member, that participated, and Bryant, and Carol, and everybody else who was a part of this very large undertaking. Can we have roll call, please?
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Lisa Hessel.
Motion passes. Moving on to Item B, Semi-Annual Review of Closed Session Minutes. These minutes were provided to the board in accordance with state law. Did we... I was not aware of any changes that were proposed. Are we prepared to move to approve the need for confidentiality still existing for current closed session minutes?
Cara Drumkey.
Drumkey, move that the need for confidentiality still exists for all current closed session minutes and those listed below, and that all shall remain in the closed file.
Benjamin, second. Thank you. Any discussion?
Pause for discussion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Lisa Hessel.
Motion passes. The closed session minutes are approved. Moving on to Item C, Employment of Employees.
These Employment of Employees Personnel Report was any ones that were brought to us after the P&amp;P meeting, and so that's why they're a separate item from the consent agenda.
Great. We are looking for a motion to approve the employment items listed that occurred after the P&amp;P committee meeting.
Benjamin, I move to approve the employment items listed, which occurred after the P&amp;P committee meeting.
Drumkey, second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Pause for discussion.
Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwall.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Item D, Community Engagement. I will turn it over to... Is it to Mary for this item?
Mary Toddery. At the committee meetings last month, we discussed the charge that needed to be written by the board for the community engagement process that's going to begin next Tuesday. And we took the feedback we received from you, and in the document tonight, you will see the revised draft of the charge that we hope...
Momentary pause.
...reaches all the points that you addressed, and you'll approve it.
Can we have a motion to approve the D-128 charge to the Community Engagement Facilitating Committee, please?
Jim Batson.
Batson, so moved.
Middle Ash Cotwall.
Cotwall, second.
Thank you. Any discussion about the Community Engagement Facilitating Committee? How many people have agreed to join the committee?
I believe the number is 21, 22. That's a combination of mostly outside community people as well as staff.
Okay, great.
And board members.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions?
Pause for discussion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Well, are we still trying to... How many did they want? Did they say was optimal for the committee, for the steering committee?
I believe the number of community people was... It was 21? Do you remember, Denise?
We invited 21.
25 for the total group.
Total committee was 25, between 20 and 25, but that's, again, two board members and some district office administrators.
So we're at the level that they felt was a good representation?
Yes, they did give us positive feedback on the list that we...
And we still have...
They helped us.
We still have a few people that we're waiting to hear back from as well, so...
Okay, so that committee, just to review, is made up of community members, staff members, administrators... administrators, and board members.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mary, can you just outline a little bit what will happen at the meeting on the 6th?
The meeting on the 6th is to talk to the individuals who have accepted our invitation and explain to them the process of how they will be overseeing the board's charge to engage the community in a better understanding of what our, our needs are in terms of our facilities and how they best feel we should prioritize those. And hopefully, after that meeting, the people that are there will accept the charge to be on the committee going forward.
Commit to the committee, if you will. Committee commitment.
Dr. Denise Herman.
They'll also have input into meeting schedule preferences for time and evenings or mornings, whatever the committee comes to resolution on.
And I know they agreed to allow us to share positions, so that'll give us a.
Yes.
For the board members.
For the board members.
Yeah.
Pause for discussion.
Great. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to Item E, Fiscal Year 23 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Dan Stanley.
Yeah, so attached are the annual financial reports that Betsy mentioned, including the letters, they're all included there as well, so it's there, ready for approval.
Thank you for your ongoing excellence in the audit reports that always come back with the highest standard. It's something that we are used to, but we do not take for granted.
Dan Stanley.
Thank you. I do want to emphasize that there are a lot of people in our system that.
Momentary pause.
Massively contribute to that, and I'm not just talking the business offices core for sure, but I'm talking every single person in our system that enters something into Skyward, that approves something in Skyward, that confirms we have receipts, all those things matter in the audit process that helps us have successful, transparent financials. And so those people doing what they need to do are essential, and so there are hundreds of people in our organization that contribute to that, so.
Yes.
I'm thankful for them doing that, too.
I appreciate you mentioning that. I'll also note that I neglected to turn it over to our FNF Chair to take us through these items. I took us through FNF in our Chairman Don's absence and was just rolling right through. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Batson to take us through the, the motion and the roll call, and then you can take us through the rest of these items.
That was quite all right, because you probably covered for me at FNF as well, so. Okay, so can we have a motion to approve the annual?
Drumkey, move to approve the fiscal year 23 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report.
Hessel, second.
Okay, any further comments or discussion? Again, I want to thank Dan and the team all throughout the district for a really fine financial report here, so. Roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. We have some recommendations for adjustments to the school fees. This was discussed in, in committee. Can we start with a motion in a second to approve this?
Lisa Hessel.
Hessel, move to update the school fees. Where is the motion? I'm sorry. I lost the motion. Motion to approve the school fees plan as presented.
Drumkey, second.
Jim Batson.
Any comments or questions?
Lisa Hessel.
I, I think we could turn it over to Dan for the summary. I think that would be helpful.
Okay, that would be good.
Yeah, I very much appreciate the board's conversation about this.
We talked about this for a long time in committee.
Which is fantastic. So based on feedback from the board, what we're looking to do is really three things. One, increase the, the standard registration fee from 300 to 325. At the same time, removing the activity pass, which also happens to be $25. And so the activity pass was a $25 pass that families, for student, a student could buy that would get them into many home athletic activities there. What we're looking to do is remove that and basically allow any of our current students to attend, participate in regular home events and activities, things like that. There's some things that will still require fees, like anything IHSA playoff related, that they govern those, we don't control those. Some, some things like that there's reserved seating for, like musicals and stuff like that, you would still probably have to pay fee for, but this would, the idea is to remove barriers to allow students to just be able to just show their ID and walk in, rather than now they have to show their ID with an activity pass sticker on it or pay the fee to get in. This would remove that and allow them to participate and support their fellow students. And then the third thing, so that was two things, the third thing would be work to increase our driver's ed fee. Right now it's at 245, and we would look to increase it to 350, but there's a legal process you have to walk through that would take us about a year to complete, so it would really be for the 25, 26 year, we would look to implement that.
And just to review, we have not reviewed our fees in seven years, is that correct?
Yeah, you guys reviewed them right before I started here.
Yes, so we have let them stay for a long time. Will fee waivers be affected by us changing our fees in any way?
Dan shakes his head no.
So students who qualify for fee waivers will not be affected. I think those are all the questions and comments I had.
No.
Anybody else?
Well done.
I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the discussion that Dan led us through surrounding these fees. He provided really thoughtful analysis and some great, I think, comparables to neighboring districts of ours. And as a board member, this kind of helped me see the big picture of the direct impact that the fees that we charge, how that impacts our students, and the benefits that they, they get through these fees. So even though fees are a bummer, they tend to be a good value in our district, and that all that information you provided two weeks ago really kind of painted that picture for me, so thank you so much.
Jim Batson.
I also do like the, the idea of sort of moving the activity pass cost out of that and allowing all students to have access to all activities that they, that they may not have had access to before, so I think that's a great, a great move.
Our student reps weren't here when we had a lengthy conversation, and I'm not going to put you on the spot, Maya, but I saw you go, I liked that. So that makes me feel like we made the right choice, you know? We want to make sure that everybody feels they are welcome to all of our performances, activities, so you think this is a good choice?
Yeah, I'm on our recruiting here at Vernon Hills and Sweet, we kind of discuss like how to constantly bring more people to like the events and just get more people involved into activities and actually put fees, like removing those is just like a big help to that, and like, you know, it's only a few dollars, but each, each week if you're spending like four or five dollars on a game, it can add up, especially for so many individuals in our district, so I just think that that's really like good that we're moving towards removing those fees.
And fun fact, we know that the research shows that the more engaged and involved our students are, the better their academic performance is. So that's why we were very motivated to roll that $25 right into our fees to make it accessible for everybody, and there doesn't have to be a, a question of whether or not that four or five dollars to attend a performance or attend an athletic event is something that they can do, they can go ahead and do it, and our fees still wind up being either at or below, below most of our peer districts, but still very, very much in line with what our peer districts are charging, so.
And the inclusion of the activity pass and those fees really goes to support our broader goal of providing, you know, further equity within the district to our students, so removing some of those financial barriers allows everyone to participate, which is the goal of education, one of.
Good stuff. So we've had a motion, we've had a second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye. Okay, a few items that are not all that exciting but need to be done. The first is the Vernon Hills Chiller replacement.
And so this is a group of items, the next G through L are all summer capital projects that are on our list of regularly scheduled maintenance.
Correct. I do want to note the L was not at the committee, that's one we added in between, so I just want to be clear, that's one we hadn't discussed, but I'll be ready to talk through it, just to give you context.
Thank you.
You want to start by giving us just a brief background on this?
Yeah, you mean the first one, the chiller?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this past summer, or actually kind of right now, the Libertyville Chiller is being replaced, and so time is due now for the Vernon Hills Chiller to be replaced, so that would, that would be scheduled out as part of the summer capital process. It's for 1.17 million, so it is, it's an expensive endeavor, but thankfully it's one you only have to do every 20 or so years.
And it did come in under budget, I will note, so it was a budgeted expense, and it's a little bit less than what, what you had budgeted.
A little less than what we estimated, yeah, for, for that particular project, yes.
Big chiller. Can we have a motion, please?
Drumkey, move to approve the VHS Chiller replacement proposal with train for the amount of $1,170,000.
Hessel, second.
Okay, any further comments or questions? Again, this was discussed extensively in committee, so. Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, moving on, VHS Roof Replacement.
Can I just briefly note that in each of these items, the District Capital Projects spreadsheet is included? So for anybody who's wondering kind of what's on the menu for the list of capital projects that we have on that list, it is embedded in Items G through K. It's the same document, but it's been linked several times because it's relevant to each of these items.
Okay, okay, Roof Replacement, want to give brief?
Yeah, we received bids on the roof replacement. This is going to replace Vernon Hills roofs 10, 11, 2, and 2A. 9 was added as an alternate, and the bids came in much less than what we estimated, so we added 9, and it's still going to be quite a bit less, so the total contract is with, help me out here, Ridiford Roofing for 1, 1, 1,162,900.
Okay.
One thing I should also just share that we, we meant, we talked about solar as well at the committee, just a reminder that we will have more information on that at a future meeting, that we're working on a more like holistic look to kind of potentially look at catching up the roofs that we've done recently, so not, including these and other roofs that we've done, so we're just not, we're still not there yet, but we'll have that at a future meeting.
I think we had said for FNF Committee Meeting, not in February, but in March, you'd be able to give us a timeline of when we could expect a presentation, not the presentation in March, but we would get a sense of a timeline of when we could expect to see some proposals and plans that we could consider.
It might be sooner than that.
You think it was February?
Off the top of my head, I don't remember.
It was either February or March Committee you were going to get back to us and say, this is about how long it's going to take before we have some things for you to look at.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll look forward to that in either February or March.
Yeah, I'd love to have something in February for you to see, so.
That would be great, but we want you to be able to have enough time to estimate realistically what the timeline is to present us with some options.
For sure, and it's probably something that will take a few meetings to get through, both to see options and then probably process them, because there's a lot of different options out there and different implications.
Jim Batson.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Cotwell, move to approve the VHS Roof Replacements, roofs 10, 11, 2, and 2A, and Roof 9 Alternate, bid with Ridiford Roofing for the total amount of 1,162,900.
Lisa Hessel.
Hessel, second.
Okay, any further questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Dr. Denise Herman.
Before you go on, I guess I want to make one clarification. The list that you referred the public to, that District Capital Projects list, that is actually for this summer.
I was just looking.
So this, so we might want to make sure on these titles that we put the scope of it, this is for Summer 2024, the annual budget where we spend approximately $4 million saying, what are all of the asset preservation things that we're doing that is different from the list of long-term capital improvements that we've been talking about? So I just want to make sure that the community understands the attachment that we referenced is for summer capital projects, which again are large cost, obviously that was 1.1 million for a chiller, but it is not the same menu that the board has been considering for the next five to 10 years in terms of capital projects.
Thank you, Dr. Herman. I misspoke, and that's an important clarification. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is the masonry work at LHS. Dan, you want to give a quick overview?
Yeah, that's doing some masonry work around the CTE wing and the, the baseball dugout that needs repair, and so we had four bids, the low bid on that is with Burgland for amount of 89,500. This was higher than our estimates, so we, we have some things that come in lower, some things that come in higher, this is one that unfortunately came in higher than what we estimated.
Jim Batson.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a motion, please?
Cara Drumkey.
Drumkey, motion to approve the LHS Masonry Repair Bids with Burgland Construction for a total amount of 89,500.
Benjamin, second.
Any further discussion, comments?
Pause for discussion.
Okay, roll call, please, Carol.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Jim Batson.
Okay, motion passes. Next is the LHS Baseball Dugout Roofing Replacement. Dan?
This is similar to, by the way, I should give context, the reason we're going through these one by one is not because we think that's the best use of our time, it's because the law requires the board to approve these bids as separate items rather than like as one big chunk, so we're complying with the law by going through each one and approving them, but there does happen to be a lot, because this is when we're receiving a lot of our information for our summer projects. So the baseball dugout, so this is related to the other one, there's masonry issues that we have to correct, but also replacing the roof, so the roof is a, was a separate trade from fixing the masonry on the side. So that is with A1 Roofing at 67,550.
Jim Batson.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
Drumkey, motion to approve the LHS Baseball Dugout Roofing Replacement Bid with an A, with A1 Roofing for 67,500.
Hessel.
50, sorry, 550.
Hessel, second. I think it's good that you made the original motion for LHS Baseball, considering your history.
I am pleased to move.
Any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Jim Batson.
Okay, motion passes. The next one, Vernon Hills Hallway Carpet Replacement.
Dan Stanley.
Yeah, this one is replacing the carpet, kind of a final, final phase that we've been working on for a few years at Vernon Hills with Shaw for the amount of 179,929.82. Not one penny more.
Not one penny more? How, this replacement, how old is the carpet it's replacing? Is it original? I'm just curious.
Mark Koopman.
There was faulty carpet when the school was installed, I don't know the date that the hallways were replaced.
So pretty early on.
It was replaced pretty early.
Yeah.[1746.73]
Early on.
So these have lasted a while.
So they've lasted, yeah, quite a long time.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, uh, could we have a motion, please?
Cara Benjamin. I actually, I just have a quick um, question. I had asked uh, Mark and Dan to maybe just investigate what uh, alternatives could maybe uh, substitute for carpeting such as like a, a hard flooring instead, uh, to see kind of what the lifespan difference would be and whether that would be maybe an appropriate substitute. And so um, it, Mark mentioned a little bit to me, kind of just
Momentary pause.
citing the, the benefits and the drawbacks. And so I don't know, Mark, if you want to kind of just expand a little bit on that.
Mark Koopman.
Sure, um, I'm working in a, working with the manufacturers, trying to get cut sheets and, and more background information on pros and cons for carpet versus, you know, more resilient, you know, flooring, um, like a luxury vinyl tile. I haven't gotten all the information together. If you go online, it varies drastically on some manufacturers, you know, are, are uh, salespeople are saying, you know, they guarantee their product for 50 years. Uh, and, but then there's, you know, others that are 35, 25. I've talked to our installers. Um, I said, I'm still gathering information. Uh, presently, there's a luxury vinyl tile is 20 plus years and carpet is uh, 10 to 15 years. And it all depends on placement. Um, you know, an upper hallway in a school is not going to get the heavy traffic that the front entrance does. Uh, and the wear and tear, and then the maintenance is diff, you know, you, with a luxury vinyl tile uh, in a main entrance, you have to put down runners for slips and falls. So there's many factors in, uh, involved. And so as I gather more information, I should have enough for the next F and F um, for future projects um, to look at the options for flooring.
And we would certainly want that to go through the building before it came to the board. Um, I think that's something that we would, you know, it's great for us to sort of think about these things at the board level, but I don't think we want to dictate to the building what the best use of materials is because as you said, not only is.
No, it's the building's option, yes, and we will present the building, presently the building would like to replace with carpet. Um, so that's what we're moving forward with the carpet replacement because that is the request of the building. But if for the future, I can give them future options on different areas. Um, and show longevity in that, um, a carpet in a classroom is going to last a lot longer than a carpet in a hallway. Um, you know, um, an LVT with tables on it in the cafeteria moved constantly, you know. We're, we're experimenting with that. We're finding out how durable it is.
Sure, and then there's the noise component as well. So I think there's a lot of considerations when we look at the various options. So.
Correct, yeah.
And did I understand this is the, the last phase of hallways in the building to be replaced?
Yes, it's uh, the last phase of the hallways, um, upstairs and then one, uh, the main hallways upstairs. Uh, basically from the, the main staircase on the east side of the building, all the way around here to the library and, you know, in the library section. And then a, a small section downstairs by the music area.
Okay.
And then that's the, all the hallways are done at that point.
Okay.
Except for the, in the office area, and that hallway is in great shape. So um, John and I discussed it and John said he didn't feel it need to be replaced and we, we can postpone that replacement.
Okay.
Jim Batson.
Need a uh, motion in a second, please?
Hessel, motion to approve the V H H S hallway carpet replacement proposal by Shaw for the amount of 179,929 dollars and 82 cents.
Cotwell, second.
And not a penny more, right? Any other questions, comments? No, thank you, and, and thank you for that, Cara. Um, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Jim Batson.
Okay, moving on, last item under the uh, action items, um, LHS um, HVAC equipment. And I'll let Dan give some uh, background on this since this is somewhat new.
Yeah, this was not at the F and F. Uh, to be clear, Mark had the info, but he, he and I hadn't had a chance to connect. And with all the other things on that agenda, I didn't have time. So uh, this is to pre-purchase HVAC equipment uh, for, because we're beginning a multi-year um, replacement of the HVAC equipment at LHS, which will take several years. Um, and so the lead times on HVAC equipment is significant. And so we are bidding out the installation of them, but what we'd like to do is pre-purchase uh, the, the number of units that are listed here. Um, which can be a little tricky because we don't yet know how much it'll cost to install them. However, we do have an estimate in there and then if we get bids back and it's higher than what we thought it was going to be, we will just uh, probably look at installing less of them. But we would still want to purchase the HVAC units because we can store them. Uh, and so they'll get replaced eventually. It's just a matter of when. Uh, so I feel very comfortable moving forward with uh, recommending a pre-purchase of this equipment uh, because we absolutely are going to need this and many more equipment over the next uh, several years.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear, this is, it's, I said it was somewhat new to us. The concept of replacing these is, is on the capital list. We understand these needed to be done. What, what's new is uh, what came in our board packet and we all had a chance to review was the actual uh, bids that came back for these, these particular items. So I didn't want to give the impression that we didn't, weren't aware of this or that we weren't uh, familiar or supporting this uh, this purchase.
Mark Koopman.
And if I can add, the pre-purchase is um, because of lead times. So if the, we pre-purchase before our bids come through, we will have the equipment here uh, by June for when school ends. So the contractors come in and install it. If we were to wait for our bids all to come in, we, we're going to miss that, that window to uh, get the equipment on time to have it done over the, you know, uh, nine-week period that we have in the summer to do our construction work, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
Hessel, motion to approve the train equipment and controls pre-purchase proposal in the amount of 443,860 dollars.
Cara Drumkey.
Drumkey, second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Pause for discussion.
No, okay, hearing none. Roll call, please, Carol.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, then motion passes and that concludes the uh, F and F report.
Great, so that concludes our items for action. Um, in section five for information, uh, item A is our fiscal year 24 mid-year financial review.
Dan Stanley.
Yeah, just wanted to give a, a few highlights. So what we usually do is a practice is halfway through the fiscal year, do a pretty in-depth review of how the year is progressing from a financial perspective. Uh, and so um, really just the summary I'll give you is uh, pretty brief, but there's a reporter there with a lot more information uh, that you're welcome uh, to take a look at. Uh, our fiscal 24 budget has a surplus of 680,000 dollars, which is very close when you're talking about 100 million dollars on expenditures and revenue. Revenues at this point, what I'm sensing, uh, or what I'm projecting based on what's actually happened is that I'm anticipating revenues being about 1.25 million over what we budgeted. Uh, and that's primarily due to interest income being much higher than we anticipated. And when I look into the detail, really what it is, is just interest rates were higher for a longer period of time than we guessed in the summer. And that's simply what happened. It just as easily could have been less as well, uh, so that I don't think there was really necessarily we were able to anticipate exactly what would happen there. Um, but that's primarily what's happening on the revenue side. So that's putting us over budget by about 1.25 million. Then at the expenditure side, we look to be coming under, coincidentally, by about 1.26 million. Um, the two primary reasons for that, I would say, is um, our ESP salaries, so our educational support staff is coming under budget. Um, a little under 200,000 and what that, the reason for that is uh, unfilled positions. So we'll have positions that we, uh, for example, will budget for the whole year, but based on timing and hiring, they don't actually end up working the entire fiscal year. Uh, and so that, that, that kind of a thing is happening. Plus, we have positions that we're having difficulty filling, um, and those, so those dollars have not been spent, so that's what's contributing to that. Uh, more, a more significant impact to the expenditures is the number of students that are outplaced. Um, that is a, uh, that, that chunk of students, uh, that chunk of money is a pretty big line item. It's several million dollars in our budget, uh, that accounts for students that are placed in outside facilities. Um, simply put, there are less students in facilities currently than what we anticipated back in the spring. And uh, that can happen for a variety of reasons. Uh, I would say the two primary reasons based on a review uh, that Kelly and I did when we walked in through, looking at each student, where they are and what happened. My sense is, uh, there were a number of students that, um, uh, what Kelly would say is, uh, they, they, they chose to graduate. They exited the program, uh, maybe a little bit sooner than what was anticipated. So that's, that's one reason. And then the second reason, which actually I found pretty encouraging, is there's a number of students that have been reintegrated back into our schools. And so they're no longer at outplace. And so that was, that was pretty cool. So, uh, but the effect of that is we're not spending as much as we thought in that area. And this time last year, uh, if you look at the data, it was extremely close, extremely tight. And so uh, one student can have a significant impact on those numbers. Uh, so those are, that's really the summary of what's happening on the expenditure side. Everything else is pretty much within range. Um, but the net effect of that, getting 1.2 million more of revenue and 1.2 million less of expenditures, add those together, you're talking at 2.5 million dollars is projected in addition to the 680,000. So we're going to be closer to, I think, a 3.2 million dollar surplus by the end of this year. So that, that's a, just a summary level of what's happening at a big picture level with our finances and a little bit of why.
Thank you. That's excellent news. Um, do we have any questions for Dan or his team?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to Dr. Herman's report.
Great, and I think Beau is going to put up a few slides that I'm just going to use to uh, accompany the update that I have for the board. Um, as Dan uh, provided us a sort of a mid-year update on um, our financials. I wanted to give a more general overview of some of the things we've been focusing on for our strategic plan and some of the other district-wide updates. I'm going to give a general overview, some of the individual teams. So for example, in December, the Exploring Multiple Paths uh, uh, team came and presented their whole suite of, of work. And we'll have uh, the same thing from um, Equity and Inclusion and from the Wellness Team. But one of the things that uh, I wanted to remind the board of, because we had some conversation last, at the last meeting about how to best communicate the work that we're doing on our strategic plan and making sure that it's accessible to the community and to our staff. So one of the things that I did, and I'll make this presentation available to everyone, is to sort of show the evolution of how we've tried to, our, our absolute best to communicate this from in July, when the board first adopted the three-goal areas and we were recruiting uh, staff members to participate on those teams, to the mailer that we sent out to the community um, with the goal areas. And then the following the booklet where we had the action plans ready and approved, that was sent last January. Following that, we made a document for the staff to show the alignment of many of the things that were in that action plan to ISBE guidelines. So for example, the um, one of the uh, initiatives that I'm going to comment on next, heterogeneous classes, how that was linked to the 70-30 rule and some of the other guidelines, just to show that, yes, they're good ideas, but they also are required by law. Then over the summer, um, we worked and published in October a progress tool on our website. Um, again, that's showing percentage overall completion of the five-year goals. And then if you click to the sub-areas, it shows some of the by actual strand progress that we're making. And then most recently, we collaborated with uh, members of the Labor Management Team who gave us feedback on the strategic plan map. And one thing they encouraged us to do was to gather some of these things that have been in different places and put all of this in one place. That's the what, the how, and the when. Um, and so we're going to be sharing that with the staff internally in February. Um, but again, that has um, uh, a lot of documents that would be internal documents. Um, so we will be using key points of that and adding that to our website. But I just want to make sure the board is aware that as we continue to refine the way that we're thinking about our strategic plan and making, helping to make connections for our own selves, leading the work, but then also to students and staff who are going to be receiving the outcome of the work. So that's the first update. The next one is, at our last meeting, we had a very thoughtful conversation about the expectations for high achievement for all students. And we're looking at the achievement gap that exists for our students of color. Um, Larry Varne, the Director of Equity and Inclusion, um, gave a, a really nice summary of our PSAT data, broken down um, by students of color, um, and, and some of the other demographics. I wanted to remind the staff, or the, the board, that one of the things that's guiding our strategic plan and our mission is the idea of all students reaching proficiency or exceeding um, in the areas required by the state, ELA, math, and science. And that we also, in addition to that 11th grade assessment, use grades and other measures to help us monitor their progress along the way. So the next slide, please. One of the things that we recognized, looking at the data that Larry shared, we've been looking at that same trend data for the last several years. And we realized that our students, in order for their achievement to increase, they're going to need access to grade-level instruction and that some of our students weren't receiving that accesses directly. So we presented this timeline to the board and to staff last spring. Again, the 70-30 rule that I mentioned would literally suggest that we make this change all of, all at once. But I don't think our system can do that well. And so we worked to map this timeline out over three years. So you'll see that right now, I've highlighted, we're in the spring of 2020, 2024. And we did do the Accelerated Placement Act and we're using that data to place our ninth through 11th graders. Um, our instructional coaches have been providing training for all staff on differentiation, doable differentiation and many other kinds of luncheon learns and university courses. Um, we also have been working this spring and will continue to expand our tier-two intervention model. Um, as the teacher comment noted, we do know we'll have increased students who have not had an honors or AP class and we want to make sure we've expanded those resources at tier-one so they can get the help drop-in wise, but also tier-two for students who need some more intense. We also, this is where our partnership with Equal Opportunity Schools um, is right-aligned with this work because we did the survey in the fall. We had our trusted adults reach out to some of the targeted students. They are enrolling now and then we'll be able to work with some of those students to see what are the courses in which they're enrolling. Where might we need to build some supports for the spring and over the summer? So you'll see that's embedded. And then finally, um, one of the more uh, labor-intensive work is the course teams, the ninth-grade course teams, English IX, Algebra I, Biology, and Social Studies, working to take the best of the work they were doing in college prep and make adjustments so that that heterogeneous group of students can access that. So more differentiation, much more clarity on the learning targets, additional common assessments. Um, so they've been working hard in the fall and are going to continue to do that work. We have a work session scheduled next Thursday, excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday. Um, but again, want to give kudos to the teachers on those teams and the department chairs and the assistant principals who are really focusing on ninth grade, so one grade level at a time. Next slide.
Pause for slide.
Um, I also wanted to just give a very brief update because we're going to have a presentation from the grading and assessment team. But because we did send out those surveys, I wanted the board to know, um, we are in the area where we're gathering feedback from staff and students and parents on the pilot. So in January, we sent out surveys um, to gather that information. So the grading and assessment team is going to be, you know, crunching that data and using it to do final refinements on the guidance document. We'll also use that to inform some sessions at the February 19th Institute Day. So staff members who weren't in the pilot will have opportunities to learn more about it and to get some support in being ready um, for the, you'll see the, in addition to summer workshops that will be available to support teachers during implementation next fall. Again, a much more detailed report will be coming from the grading and assessment team. But just in case you had questions from neighbors about the grading and assessment survey, that's where it's fitting. Next slide.
Pause for slide.
One other thing that has been very exciting is the Innovative Use of Time Committee. And last week, they started their site visits. Um, so you'll see that I highlighted in again, the blue, where they are now, spring. Last uh, fall, they did a lot of work studying different models, understanding what needs that our students have, what, what um, other schools are doing to try and reallocate time to meet those needs. Um, they visited two schools last week, Tom?
Dr. Tom Culentez.
Last week with the, and then we did a Zoom meeting on Monday with a third school and then we have a visit tomorrow.
Right, so again, a lot of. Right. So again, a lot of excitement, you know, really seeing different schedules in action. So that's been exciting. And again, they're using this information to design possible alternatives for us to consider. That will then be forwarded to administration, and we will consider those recommendations. Currently, our bell schedule is in the contract, so that would need to be considered at the negotiating table next fall. And finally, or not finally, but next slide.
Pause for slide.
One of the things that I wanted to help the board see is the intersection of this work. Again, anything that we do in a strategic plan should have different parts of it being connected. So what we're seeing and hearing from staff about wanting to make sure that they have enough time for professional learning to be able to understand the grading and assessment changes, to be able to work collaboratively on the ninth-grade courses or future courses. We're definitely hearing even teachers at the board table back in the fall made statements about wanting access to very clear and targeted and useful and effective professional learning. So that's one thing that we see as a need in, in all of the projects we're moving forward on. We're also hearing from our MTSS team and from our intervention teachers, increased time for students to access tier-two interventions. Right now, it's very difficult in our schedule for students to, who might need an interventionist. They have to either give up an elective or maybe half a lunch period or something like that, where we know many other high schools in the area have carved out time weekly, either one or two flex periods or something like that. So all students, regardless if they have a lunch or a study hall, can have that. So I know that's one thing that we're seeing. Here's this need that we're seeing as we have more diagonal movers and other people. How can we make sure we're adjusting our time to help those students be successful and read those, reach those high goals that we're talking about? And then finally, back in December, the board heard a presentation from Ben and the Explore Multiple Paths team talking about the access that students will need to their school counselors to be able to receive the PACE framework instruction, our social emotional learning curriculum that will be coming out of the wellness program and other college and career experiences. So all of these initiatives are working together. The idea of identifying the needs, we know which students aren't being successful right now from, again, the data we looked at in the spring. So what can we adjust so those students can be more and more successful? So I just think it's, it's nice to see all the different people who are working on those committees and knowing that their work is coming together to hopefully really provide a nice safety net and learning experience for students. Next slide. And again, you know, when we go back to one of the things that's important about our strategic plan, it's not where we are right now, but in the direction we're moving. And again, I really appreciate the board's support in moving forward on our strategic plan. You know, it really has set some very good targets for all students, for the students who are currently being successful to continue and to grow even more, and for the students who in the past haven't been able to reach proficiency, what we can do to make sure that they reach that. So I'd take any, any questions on any of these in general.
Lisa Hessel.
You know, I really appreciate seeing this and how the work of all of the course teams are interconnected. I, I, I think because the directive of the board is to execute the strategic plan that we all worked on together and we've all agreed on.
Momentary pause.
This type of reporting back to us so that we can see all the work that's being done and what direction that work is pointing us towards, which is the accountability for the strategic plan that we've mandated. So I appreciate this information.
Cara Drumke.
I want to reiterate, sometimes we get lost in the weeds when there's so many. And thank you for presenting it in a way where we can see an overview of where we were, how far we've come, and where we're going. So I know that was a lot of work. I appreciate that. And I hope we can get that again.
Yes.
Yeah. I mean, I just, I think it gives us a better picture and some, you know, move us away from the minutia.
Right. Well, and I also think I remember the conversation, it was a hard conversation. Some of the board members asked very thoughtful questions about that we, we aren't seeing growth yet in some of our student subgroup scores. When are we gonna see growth? And one of the things that I talked about is next fall is when there's going to be significant differences in the instruction and the learning environment that they're in. Although we've made some improvements in attendance that you saw and celebrating, that's awesome. And we've made some adjustments in some of our behavior responses, significant adjustments for the
Momentary pause.
coursework in which the students will be participating is really gonna make that shift next fall.
I also think as a non educator, it's very helpful when in our PNP committee presentation from Larry Varn and in your presentation tonight, you make the expectation of when the board can start to see the results that will come from the work that's being executed on the strategic plan. I find that enormously helpful, because it's not always obvious to me that attendance we can see in real time, but proficiency where we're closing gaps on the PSATs, we, we have to understand that seeing a change in that data will take time. So I think I'm probably not the only person as a non educator, we probably have many members of the public, who it's also helpful to see, when can we expect to see results in student data come from all this work that we're doing? So I appreciate that aspect of it.
And as we talked about last, at the committee meeting, knowing that we're going to be able to have some additional data at our fingertips that we haven't had previously, we will be able to report more frequently to the board, so it won't just be 11th grade. We'll have the ninth grade, 10th grade, PSATs. We'll also have STAR data to even measure more than just annually, three times a year. And so I really feel like while we need to be patient to see some of those significant shifts, we're also going to be able to paint the picture more clearly than we have been in the past.
I, I'm gonna take the ownership of, that was me who said that. And I think I needed to be reminded that we have, I mean, when I, I thought Larry's presentation was incredible to show us again that we have work to do. And especially with our students of color and our different minority students. And I, I left that feeling very sad that our gap has not closed. And then I had to be reminded, but we're not really doing much different yet. So I am committed to seeing that, because that is my life, that is where I live. And I know those students can achieve, and I'm committed to that. And I don't think I, I, I'm gonna leave it with that. So I'm looking.
And so for people that don't know, you're professionally an interventionist.
I am an interventionist. That is my life. These are my students, and I, I am really looking forward to watching the changes show some improvement. But I needed to be reminded, we haven't really enacted much of what we're intending to change. So.
I guess one of the things I just want to maybe circle back on. We have had teachers working very, very hard to try and ensure all students learn. So when I say we haven't made the significant changes, it is in our whole system. The idea of having classes that were below grade level standard. Teachers were working very hard within that setting to try and help all students succeed. But the structure of it made it very, very difficult for them as teachers and for the students as learners. So I just want to, again, for the teachers and the board members to know that we want to acknowledge we've been working very hard as individual teachers, but that as we're moving forward, that when we're talking about the changes we're making, it's changes to our system, how we're placing kids, how we're assessing kids. That's really where we'll see more noticeable changes in larger groups of students than what we've been able to, to show so far.
I'll share with one of our PDs, one of my own PDs, that when, just for our non educators on the board, when we don't see systemic change and systemic alignment, it's whack-a-mole. I mean, you might as well just say it's whack-a-mole. You hit them here, get them up, and then they come out. And then all of a sudden, there's a gap again. So I'm looking forward to seeing the systemic change. It's, uh, this is where we show growth across the board.
Lisa Hessel.
Yes. And it is our job as the board to hold Denise and her team accountable for the systemic changes that we've all agreed need to take place to serve all of our students. So, thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Herman before we move on?
Pause for discussion.
Okay. Board comments and events. I'd like to note that the reason we're meeting tonight instead of last night, last night was the annual EdRed legislative dinner that several of us attended. It was an excellent event at Stevenson High School, not only to be at a tour, but we also got to hear from several legislators on issues that are impacting public education, including safety, including schools being used as polling places, and several other issues that I think affect quality public education. And I just want to shout out to the EdRed board that did an excellent job planning and executing the event.
And a shout out to our president who happens to be on the, is it the, you're on the board?
I'm on the exec board for EdRed, and I had nothing to do with the excellent event that was executed last night, other than attending it. But it's a very worthwhile organization. Yes.
It, it was a really great event. It gives us a chance to not only communicate with others at other districts in the area, but also to communicate with our legislators, both the Chair of the Education Committee in the Senate and the House down in Springfield were there and got great comments from the panelists. It's just a, and we heard some nice things from students, and it was just a really nice event. And I would encourage next year, as many people as can go from the board, I would encourage that.
Lisa Hessel.
Thank you. Any other board comments and events before we move on to our ISB report?
Pause for discussion.
Any report for ISB?
I do. I have two things. You all have received an invitation for the Lakes Division meeting. It's actually coming up in March, Wednesday, March 13th. I would encourage you to attend for a number of reasons. One is it's very close by. It's over in Mundrain. The, the speakers are both from District 73. Dr. Peter Hannigan, who's the superintendent at one of our center districts, and they're a communication specialist. They're gonna be speaking on generational communication, so how do you communicate across the generations? Should be a really nice opportunity. Again, it's another opportunity to network with people from around the, the county. This is put on by the Lakes Division Executive Committee. So I highly encourage you to, to attend that. And then I just want to thank Denise, the administration, and the board for allowing me to attend our national organization. We're all familiar with the ISB. ISB is a part of a organization called COSPA or COSPA, I forgot how you pronounce it. It's a consortium for state school board associations. The national conferences in Dallas, Texas this year, I believe this is the first time we're sending anyone to one of the national organization, school board organization conferences in as long as I've been on this board. So I appreciate the opportunity to represent District 128, to represent the Lakes Division at this meeting. And I will be certain to bring back lots of good ideas and information for all of you. That will happen between now and the, the next board meeting. Actually, I'm returning on the Sunday, the, the day before the next board meeting. So if you look at the agenda for that and you have anything you want me to, you know, hone in on or bring back some information on, let me know. But I will be representing us on, at that meeting.
Great. Thank you. And you will report back if that is a worthwhile use of your time. As you said, it's the first time that we're sending somebody to the national conference. We attend the state conference every year in November together, but it's a fairly new national organization.
Yeah, just a few years old, founded in late 2021. And I think has 28 member states, something like that, 29. It's the largest of the, the state school board association consortiums, if you will. So it should be, I, I understand it's a really great event. And not so ironically, it was founded and is now being led by the former Illinois School Board Association Director. So it's, uh, it's in good hands. Illinois is well, well-represented at this organizations.
Okay. Thank you. Seadoll, do we have any report tonight?
Just very brief. And this actually, I think this update has to do with something that was sent out to the governing board prior to the winter break, but we haven't met since to have it talked about. Just super quick. So our Seadoll Superintendent announced her retirement toward the end of last year, 2023. And so Seadoll is in the process of trying to find their interim superintendent. So the executive board put together a list kind of of their wants, needs, desires, what they'd like to see in their ideal candidate. And the process in looking for that interim superintendent is ongoing. And at the March governing board meeting, they plan to have some candidates to present to the governing board for either approval for next stage or, or maybe even approval right then. That is unclear to me, but I will learn more and report back.
Lisa Hessel.
Was there an opportunity for our superintendent and Director of Special, Special Education to give feedback on what an interim might look like?
Yes, both Kelly and I had the opportunity to provide input into the characteristics. And I believe Kelly might be serving on one of the interview committees.
Oh, excellent. Good. Great. I'm glad to hear that our district is participating in that important interim search. Thank you. Okay. If we have nothing further, I am going to review the future agenda items. Everybody can see them there.
Can I make one comment on the future agenda item?
Yes, please.
There's a proposed District 128 Safety and Security presentation. I don't know exactly which direction that's going, or if it gets too in-depth in either the security of the building or networking, cybersecurity kinds of things. I can offer that, that could be, that is a, a reason that we could go into closed session. So we're not divulging things that we do to try to prevent people that might be watching our video from accessing our building, accessing our networks, that kind of thing. So if there is intended to be any, anything that gets into what we might not want to divulge to the general public in order to keep our students and our, our staff and our buildings safe, we could move that to closed session. But I'll leave that up to you. That's just a, a suggestion.
I think that's an excellent, excellent observation. I think I trust that Dr. Herman and her team will evaluate. We do have this presentation every year. They do an excellent job of keeping the board informed on general procedures, both for technology, safety, as well as physical safety of our buildings and our students and staff and our visitors. But I think that being reminded of the option to go into closed session for anything else might be a good one. And I, I would say that Denise and her team have always been very responsive at answering individual board members' questions when we do have concerns. So I look forward to seeing that presentation, and I appreciate, as a Director of Technology at a public school,
I've done them both ways.
That you can remind us that we do have that option. So thank you. Any other future agenda items not listed that board members would like to discuss?
Pause for discussion and questions.
Okay. Seeing none, we are looking for a motion to convene in closed session to discuss employment of an employee under 5ILCS 120/2C1.
Cara Drumke.
Drumke moved to convene.
So moved.
In closed session. Just ask employment of an employee 5ILCS 120/2C1.
Second, Batson.
Thank you. And as a reminder, we will be taking no action coming out of closed session. Right. We'll, we'll call, please.
Pause for roll call.
Hessel.
Aye.
Cotwell.
Aye.
Betson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Drumke.
Aye.
Lisa Hessel.
Thank you. We will, now, it is 8:51. We will take a quick bio break, and then we will convene in closed session.
Fade to District 128 logo. Fade into board members seated at table.
And to return to open session, please.
Wait, Carol's not here. She must have heard it.
Yeah, okay.
Why didn't you bring her with you? I know.
Okay. Can we have a motion in a second to return to open session, please? Okay, can we have a motion and a second to return to open session, please?
Batson, move to reconvene in open session.
Good one, second.
A voice vote, all in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Can I have a motion and second to adjourn?
Batson, move to adjourn.
Benjamin, second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Fade to black. End of meeting.